Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna open up is a public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, that's not already on the agenda now, it's time to step forward. Seeing no movement from the gallery, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and ask for agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, we'd ask that item number seven, which would be consideration of a KDOT cost share agreement, be added to the agenda, please.
You've got on here approval of the agenda. Do you need that?
We normally just do it through consensus.
Alright, well, then we'll move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after we were reviewing the consent agenda submitted, I'd make a motion to submit it.
To approve it?
To approve it, I'm sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that stands as approved, and it moves us right on into unfinished business. First item is distressed property at 522 Locust. I think we have some good news on this one.
Yes, the structure was removed last week, so we would make a recommendation. The site is cleared and see no ongoing issues as far as how it was moved off the site. So it appears to be a safe and secure lot. There is still the issue, obviously, of the orphan accessory structure, but that would be a different process than this, so we would recommend that you close the distressed property proceedings on 522 Locust.
You have advised the property owner on that orphan structure and that they need to come, okay.
With that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions or discussion, I make a motion to close the distressed property proceedings on 522 Locust.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the distressed property hearings on 522 Locust. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that is closed. Next, a distressed property at 126 East Third, probably not as good a news here.
That is the Townsmen. I will just say both on this property, 126 East Third and 308 Chestnut, Mr. Reckus did reach out. He is apparently gonna be in town tomorrow and wants to meet, bringing a contractor to discuss. Other than that, I don't know, Brad, if you have any meaningful thing you wanna share as far as any updates from his council, but, you know, I guess our understanding of 126 East Third is that it, we still are not in possession of a quick claim deed for the property, and that was kind of where we had left it the last time. I believe he has indicated he has planned to potentially restore part of the property, but it's hard to tell you any specifics, cuz I have not yet seen those plans. I just know he made outreach both today to me, and then I believe his, Mr. Shrog reached out to Brad last week, indicating that Mr. Reckus had...
Well, personally, I believe they've met their expiration on that one. So, we'll address how we see fit.
What is our executive session pertaining to either of these two properties? Cuz I have a question regarding that. If so, I'll just save it for later.
We can, I mean, we can have that if you have specific things that might be covered under attorney-client privilege.
Okay, I'll just save it for later, then.
I mean, I guess we're at the point of, if we're gonna proceed, you know, with presumed demolition with the property, then you would probably wanna direct staff to get the administrative warrant so we can do the remediation. Again, that should be in the Townsmen for the asbestos, which would also involve them filling out the necessary KDHE forms for us on a commercial structure, stating that asbestos had been remediated, should cost less than a thousand dollars, but we'll have to get the administrative warrant again to get back on the property for that remediation to occur.
Okay. Well, I feel that's what we need to do.
Absolutely.
You got a consensus. Do you need anything else?
I don't know if Brad wants a formal motion to that effect, or...
Talk about an executive on potential litigation portion first.
Okay.
So this one and the next one, we probably need to continue these to the next meeting?
Or unless we take action as an, you know, add-on.
So, do we wanna make a motion on these to table them till next meeting?
Continue.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to continue the distressed property hearing at 126 East Third till next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing on 126 East Third till next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Also, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to...
Hang on just a second. Did you have anything you wanted to add on 308 Chestnut, Ethan, or?
No, we're just kinda at the same thing. I haven't, haven't had anything, have no idea what's gonna be presented tomorrow.
Gotcha.
With that, I'd make a motion to continue the distressed property hearing on 308 Chestnut till next scheduled council meeting.
My second.
Have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing at 308 Chestnut to the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Well, that brings up a distressed property at 217 Main.
That one, we, as you know, we sent out the report. We have fenced off the area that was deemed. I guess we're kind of at the, wanting to know if that property owner has indicated they would be interested in quit claiming that to us as well. So I guess we're putting that before you all of how, how do you, how would you like staff to proceed on that? Cuz we're kind of at the same point, as far as we know remediation of some level needs done.
What if we don't want it?
There is that.
I'd give the pool tables.
I would like an opportunity for myself and George, with his background, to have a look at that building at some point.
I think also, we have two absent members here this evening, and I'd like to also have input from them as we continue forward on this, this particular issue.
Sure.
So I think we should continue it to next meeting, too, and...
Okay, let's leave. We can make contact and get you guys access in the meantime.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would make motion to continue the distressed property hearing at 217 Main until the next scheduled council meeting.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing for 217 Main to the next normal council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Alright, that takes care of unfinished business. We're gonna move on to new business. And item one is the 2023 audit presentation from Knutson Monroe, and they are here tonight to tell us how good our city staff did.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to come present the 2023 City of Halsted Audit Report. Hopefully, everybody's at least had an opportunity to take a look at it prior to this evening's meeting. On page one is the independent auditor's report. Your audit is prepared in accordance with the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, which is a regulatory basis of accounting, as well as generally accepted accounting standards. We do not give an opinion, or we given an adverse opinion, as far as generally accepted accounting principles because your financial statements are not GAAP-based. They are regulatory basis under that K-MAG. So, as far as our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The aggregate cash and unencumbered cash balance of the city as of December 31, 2023, and their aggregate receipts and expenditures for the year then ended in accordance with financial reporting provisions of the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. And those are described in note one to the financial statements. It goes on to talk about the responsibilities and management for the financial statement. They have taken responsibility for it. They have signed a representation letter and have reviewed it. It goes on about our responsibilities and the fact that supplementary information is actually presented to present summary information for the prior audit year, so 2022 summary information in schedule two. If you want to go on, then, the actual financial statement itself is presented on page four. As you can see, it starts with the beginning unencumbered cash balance presented by fund. Your total reporting entity at the start of the year was $5,547,880 of unencumbered cash, receipts of just under 13 million, expenditures of a little less than, or a little more than the receipts. So your ending unencumbered cash balance at December 31 actually went down slightly to $5,476,473. Of course, your encumbrances and accounts payables get added back, so to reconcile then to your ending cash balance at December 31, which was $6,364,099. At the bottom of the page, you can see the composition of that cash. Most of all of it is held within the checking account with Halsted Bank. Your financial statements do also include the library, which is included as a related municipal entity. The notes to the financial statement are an integral part of the statement. They start on page five, primarily with the summary of significant accounting policies. This also, in that note, talks about the regulatory basis of accounting under Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, as opposed to accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. So that explains the differences between those two. Goes on to talk about your budgetary information and how the budget process works. And the best news of all is the fact that we are not aware of any statutory violations incurred by the city during 2023. So, that is noted in note two on the top of page seven. Goes on to talk about your deposits and investments, of course, under the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. The bank is required to pledge securities so that all of your cash balances in excess of FDIC insurance are covered. Everything was covered during the year and at December 31. The ending cash balance, the bank balance was actually $6,670,768. And then, of course, the carrying deposits were that $6,364,093. Long-term debt is noted in note four on page eight. You will notice that there are a couple of new line items, 2023 Series Eight Bonds, just over 2 million, and then the 2023 taxable Series A Bonds, 750,000. So that extends your debt liability out to 2038. Note five gives the capital projects information, so you've got various capital projects that were authorized, and of course, the expenditures to date listed there also. The notes continue on. Your defined benefit pension plan, of course, is CAPERS. And the net pension liability under CAPERS, in that second to last paragraph on page nine, the city would be responsible for the shortfall of $1,403,289. However, since your financial statements are presented under the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, there is no liability actually recorded. If they were GAAP-based financial statements, then that liability would be required to be reported on your financial statements. So, it's a notation only at this point. It does go into other long-term obligations, compensated absences, vacation policy, and then on page 11, your inter-fund transfers. And that is basically the composition of the financial statement and the notes. Of course, it does go into the regulatory required supplementary information. This gives you the detail behind what is included in that financial statement on page four. Your first, schedule one, you will note that there were no budgetary violations, and there were no cash basis violations. So, then it goes on into the schedules two. It gives you the prior year actual comparative information, starting with the general fund and then moving on through each of the various funds. I don't believe I need to go through any of the actual detail unless somebody has a question. Okay. So that in of itself would be your financial statement. Of course, there is also the communication letter that you should have gotten a copy of with the audit reports. It's on our letterhead. This just kind of goes through the fact that management is responsible for the selection and use of accounting policies. Those are noted in note one to the financial statements. We had no difficulties encountered in performing our audit. We did note, though, that the city doesn't actually record encumbrances. It's kind of an ongoing conversation that Ethan and I have, but it's not, your software is not user-friendly as far as recording those encumbrances. So, we have actually included them, and that's what it comes in as that add-back to the cash balance. So we recorded encumbrances to the city equipment reserve of $285,000, capital improvement reserve of $436,912, and the depreciation replacement reserve of $81,280. Those were projects that had been approved but were not completed and paid for by December 31. Any questions regarding our communication letter? I see some new faces on the council, so...
There are a few.
I wasn't sure whether anybody would have any questions.
It's all good reading.
It is.
I mean, actually, doing years of these, they start making sense.
They do start making sense.
I always just look forward to you coming in and seeing a smile on your face, cuz then I know you didn't find anything wrong.
We, the audit went very, very smoothly, so you have excellent city staff, and I believe they do an excellent job.
Well, thanks. Thanks for coming in and giving your presentation on that.
Absolutely.
We'll look forward to seeing you again next year.
Sounds good to me. Alright, thank you.
We don't need any formal action to accept the audit or anything.
Yeah, you need a motion.
Thought I remembered that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept and approve the 2023 fiscal year audit as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2023 audit presentation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that is accepted. Next on the agenda under new business is dragon grant applications. You have a whole host of people that's looking for money.
We have two dragon grant applications. One's the updated dragon grant application for Magnolia Event Venue. And with what they were able, or presented in terms of work, it would be upgrades to the windows, switching the door, which is compliance with fire code, and then also back, which is another fire code, and total repairs. Or, you know, the windows came to $7,105. And then also had a application from Halsted Dental Clinic requesting $9,800, and that was for facade improvements to the dental clinic and then the Lions Club Firework, because it's the same building. So those are the two applications. They were included, with just the personal contact information stuff redacted out. So, you could see the request and the quotes they were coming from. I will note on Magnolia that one of the owners is a licensed contractor, and so doing the work, and so that would be their in-kind donation on that project is actually the installation and door. So, and I don't know if anyone's here tonight.
Yes, Mr. Lee from Magnolia is present, if you want, if you have any questions for him.
No questions, council?
Well, yeah.
Shouldn't we put him on the spot anyway?
Yeah, come on up. Tell us what you got going on with that.
I know him pretty well, so this should be interesting.
My name's Jeremy Lee. My wife and I, we bought that in, what, September, October? And a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to get it to where it is now, so we're just looking to get it to the finish line to get the full occupancy, and then the HVAC decided to go out over the winter, and figured why not use the grant to upgrade that to an efficient mini-split system, so that was one of the, that's a big ticket. The front door's already been swapped around to open to the exterior versus opening in, so that's been done and paid for through bell, mirror, and glass. And the other things are just, what was on Doug's list to make it safe, so.
Are you over there, over there working? I'd like to just pop in and see what you got going on in there if you're ever out there.
If, if my truck's in front, or my wife's car, you know, just come on in or knock on the door. But it's been a, it's been fun.
Very good.
Turning around, so.
Works out really well.
We already have reservations into next year.
Wow, very good.
Been a, I guess, a needed thing for the city.
What, what's your capacity as far as the number of people?
Once we get Doug's requirements done, it'll be 60. Right now, it's at 25.
Well, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of need to make those improvements then, don't you?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Alright, well, thanks for coming in, Mr. Lee. We appreciate you coming in.
Appreciate it.
Well, if there's no more questions or discussions, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the dragon grant in the amount of $7,105 to Magnolia Event Venue.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a $7,105 dragon grant to Magnolia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that passes.
And with that, do we have anybody here from the clinic? Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the dragon grant in the amount of $9,800 to the Halsted Dental Clinic.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a $9,800 dragon grant to the Halsted Dental Clinic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That carries. Oh, now we're getting into the fun stuff. Funding requests from USD 440 Future Business Leaders of America. These are, these are the folks coming after our jobs, guys.
While I'm kind of introducing, would you rather, I've got Mateo and Jaden here. Do you want them to pass out individually these flyers, or we can take one and pass one down?
Yeah, pass them out, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well, as they're doing that, I'll kind of get started. I know some of you, but not all of you. I'm new to Halsted, I'm new business teacher this year, and with me, I brought Future Business Leaders of America. It is a...
What's your name before you get started?
Michaela Forkenbrock.
Okay.
Yep. It is a student organization. Halsted, when I came here, they didn't have any student organization kind of in that business realm. There's DECA and FBLA are two of the big ones, and they didn't have either one. And when I was in high school, that was really something I was passionate about, and I find a lot of success there. And so I felt like Halsted High School students needed those same opportunities, and so I kind of, you know, went to administration and I said, "Can we do this?" And they said, "Yes, let's run with it," and so it's been great ever since. Our chapter this year, in the very first year, has 27 students. That's pretty average for a student organization or club at Halsted High School. We then spent the first semester kind of just getting things together as a new club, and then, starting in January, we actually started our competition season. And so in FBLA, all of my members are kind of competing with other students from other schools that also have chapters, and they are competing in a number of events. There are 76 different events. They're all ranging from business administration, accounting, finance, banking, graphic design, video production, website design, all the things. There's even some in healthcare administration and things like that. So we don't necessarily target just students that are interested in business. We kind of can target all of our students at Halsted High School, and hopefully, they will find some niche somewhere that they find interesting. So we start competing in January. We went to our district competition. We took 15 of our 27 students, and those 15 students competed in three to four events each. Of those events, we had 31 top 10 finishes, and so that was amazing. That was great as a first-year chapter. And then we spent a couple more months after that preparing for state, which was the first week of April. And we took 11 students, and we had eight top 10 finishes. Of those top 10, anybody who places in the top four then qualifies for the national conference, which is in Orlando at the end of June. And so that's where we're coming to you today. Hopefully, these two are gonna kind of present their side of FBLA and kind of what they've learned or gained and what they see in the future, but also just in asking for support as we travel to Orlando. On the front side of that flyer they handed out to you, it kind of has more details about the breakdown of funding and how much it's gonna cost per student. We're looking at about 1,400 per student, and because we had seven amazing students qualify unexpectedly this year, and we're a new club, we obviously don't have a ton in our account at this point, and so we're looking at about 9,400 total. We have, since we found out that these seven qualified, been fundraising. They've been working very hard over the past month or so. We've raised just under half of that $9,400 already. We've been doing, we did a 50-50 raffle, concession stands, hosting breakfasts and meals and things like that, just trying to get our face out there, and then also some sponsorships with local businesses. And so we've kind of just been trying to find our way in any way we can, but I'll turn it over to them. They'll kind of just share their experiences, and then we'll kind of wrap it up. Any questions for me at this point?
Not yet.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mateo Weber, and I am a senior on the FBLA team. This is my first year doing FBLA, and I have fell in love with it. I wish that we had done this all four years of my high school career, because not only has this helped me as a speaker with the different presentation events that I do, but this has helped me with networking and meeting professionals that can also help me in the events that I compete in. For nationals, I qualified in public speaking, and I qualified with graphic design. With nationals, we can only choose to bring one event, so I'm bringing my graphic design. And at districts, I got to talk with several professionals about how they go about doing things and their different themes on their businesses, and it has truly been such an educational experience because it's helped with job interviews, scholarship interviews, and much more. So overall, just learning all of the different things for graphic design and public speaking through this has been my favorite part of FBLA.
Hello, I'm Jaden Murray. I'm a senior who just graduated as a solicitorian. Much to your dismay, I am not coming for your job. But in talking about personal growth and professional growth is what we talked about a little bit in here in FBLA. Personally, I'm not going for a degree into business or anything like that, but as a person who is going to try to become a doctor, I'd like to have a little bit of personal information for finances, which is what my event is. It's banking and, banking and financial systems. A little bit about that is I do some prior research and have 30 minutes to prep a speech over banking and financial systems. Whether that be talking about banks or even stuff like stock market. So there's a lot of variety in FBLA. I think there is 76 events that are very vastly different from graphic design, public speaking, to banking and financial systems. And again, just like Mateo said, I really wish this was here all four years. Is it, it's really given me a chance to use my dad's ability, since he was, well, still is, a higher-up person in Fidelity Bank. He taught me a lot about banking and financial systems. He's been working there, and it's been very great being able to use that information and put that towards an event, see how much I know, and try to, well, do the best I very can, so.
Do you, all three of you, do you see a spillover?
Do you, all three of you, do you see a spillover as information of this class and your experiences in this class spill out over to the rest of the kid, get kids in school? Are they becoming interested? Are they like, what are you guys doing in there? I mean, is there a real interest bu, building in this here?
Um, I would definitely think so. Uh, as you'll hear from, uh, the forensics, uh, person, Caden Harmon, a bit, he was thinking about joining next year, um, as just another, one of his many different things that he does in high school, just like I did basically every club there. A lot of our students are very, uh, active in our community, and I think that if more people join this, we'll have an even larger roster to take to nationals next year. And I feel like, uh, we've done a very good job promoting it this year, and I'm imagining next year we'll have, hopefully, at least ten more members.
Well, I certainly wished I would've studied the stock market when I was in high school, and I would've bought a bunch of Microsoft and Apple.
There you go, yeah.
Well, counsel, this is your call.
Well, Jim or Charlie, you guys have a feel for what you'd like to kick in on this?
Yes, but, we've got some others in the wings waiting too.
Yes, yes.
Uh, having personal experience with HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, for twenty years, yeah, I know what it's like for kids to have the opportunity to go to nationals. I've gone to nationals with them, uh, on numerous occasions as a sponsor, and also because my wife was their coordinator and so on, that kind of thing. But if you're gonna get the program to go forward, you guys have to have something to strive for. And if you strive for it and don't be able, and you can't give, you're not given the opportunity to attain that, it's defeating for those underclassmen. I can assure you that happens. Uh, I, I wish we could fund the whole thing. I, I don't think that's a possibility, but that's where I am.
Ethan, what, uh, what kind of resources do we have for this type of?
I mean, we, we keep funds in, in the Community Betterment, you know, sub-fund and the general fund for various sponsorships, be it, you know, um, the special project line is, is, I mean, can handle quite a bit. It's kind of the, the catch-all for any unanticipated request. I mean, at things we know that are annual ask, we usually try and budget for, you know, be it old settlers, that kind of stuff. This is really subject to your all discretion, I would say, generally speaking, you know, five hundred to a thousand is historically what the city has done for these kinds of requests, so.
Did you come, did you come before? I, I didn't think so.
No, we have not.
I know Kelly did.
Yep. This is their first time.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion here, and please don't hesitate to not second it if you choose not to. Uh, Mr. Merritt, I wanna make a, uh, proposal of fifteen hundred dollars that we contribute to their efforts here.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, donate fifteen hundred dollars to the, uh, USD four forty Future Business Leaders of America. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Spend it carefully.
Thank you all. And it's just, I can see the excitement, I can see, um-
And good luck.
Yes, really good.
Counsel, in the, the past group that you guys gave a donation to, you asked to come back and report to you. Would you like this class to do that as well?
Yes.
I think so. Yeah, that's right up my, that's right up my alley.
We'll all remember back with us.
That, that's what we wanna see.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
And I know the forensics team, I, whether you know it or not, I follow the Facebook posts about you guys, and you've been doing a fantastic job, so. Way to represent, so. You're up next, uh, with the National Speech and Debate Association.
Is this the NFL?
Yes.
This is the real NFL.
Yes. So, uh, as Charlie indicated, uh, the organization, um, that we're looking to compete in, in nationals for used to be called the National Forensics League, um, and then changed it to National Speech and Debate Association, so that way it wouldn't create any, any confusion or anything like that. So, um, for those who do not know me, my name is Andrew Bauer. I have the great fortune to get to be the debate and forensics coach at Halsted High School. I've been, uh, coaching in Halsted since, uh, two thousand and fifteen, when I moved over from, from Bueller. And, uh, we've, my family and I have lived in Halsted since, um, about two thousand and eleven, when we first, uh, got going in this whole teaching gig. And so, uh, it's, in my opinion, one of the best jobs in the whole wide world, because I get to work with some fantastic students, including some fantastic upperclassmen. And so, some of the successes that we've had over the last year in debates, over the course of the fall, um, our students were regional champions and then went to state and finished in, in fourth place. In the spring, we compete in forensics, which I always tell to people who are unfamiliar with forensics that it is nothing to do with, uh, crime scene investigation or anything like that, despite the name. Um, but forensics means forum, it's the, the ability to be able to speak and act in, in public. And so, our students, I get to work with them on their speaking abilities and their presentation abilities. And so, uh, our team competes in a variety of events. Um, most recently, this past spring, we, uh, competed at our CKL League Meet, and we were league champions. Just, uh, last Saturday, about nine days ago, we went and competed at Mays High School and finished, uh, second place in the states, uh, across all of our different events. Um, we're allowed to bring sixteen events to state. Um, Acacia rule requires that we can't bring any more than that. In order to qualify for state, just to be able to go and compete, our students generally have to finish in either first or second place at some point at a meet over the course of the season. So, when you go to state, you're, essentially, you are a champion among other champions who also got a chance to qualify in the exact same way. Most schools will wind up qualifying, uh, maybe ten entries total to be able to take to state. Uh, our school, our team this season qualified twenty-eight entries to compete at state, and we had to narrow that down to sixteen by having an entire audition process. And so, that was something we were incredibly excited about, um, this season. Uh, another success, though, that we had this year is we competed at the West Kansas, uh, in National Speech and Debate Association District Tournament, and that was a qualifier to be able to compete at nationals. And so, we took, uh, a variety of students to, to go. Only two wind up getting to qualify for nationals, and everyone that competes against us, it's everyone from, you know, schools the size of Nickerson to schools the size of Hutchinson, Greatbend. Those were the schools that generally we were, we were up against. We were fortunate to be able to qualify two students to be able to go compete at nationals, uh, this year, which is in Des Moines, Iowa. Uh, one of the students is Mateo Weber, and we also had Caden Harmon qualify. I'm going to turn things over to them to be able to allow them to talk just a little bit about, um, a little bit about their experience. So, Mateo, how about you talk first?
So, again, I'm Mateo Weber. I'm a senior on the forensics team, and I joined forensics sophomore year, because frankly, I kinda chickened out freshman year, because with public speaking, it's a little bit nerve-wracking. So, when I finally got the nerve to join the team, my sophomore year, I, again, just like FBLA, fell in love with it. I have been a state finalist for the last three years, and this year I have qualified for nationals. Um, this has been, again, a very, very educational experience for me. Competing with people across the nation, the best competitors across the nation, will be even more educational in the way that I can see all of my competitors that I've never competed against outside of Kansas. It would truly be a phenomenal experience in that way.
Sounds nerve-wracking.
It is a little nerve-wracking, but in each event, there are several hundred, and being able to qualify for nationals is a big deal in itself. So, not only will this encourage other people on the team to keep trying and to keep joining the team, and as some of you who have been following the Team Facebook account for the last couple of years, you can see how much our numbers have grown, from just ten people to over twenty. It is truly phenomenal how much support and how great our team environment is, and it has been a wonderful experience for me personally.
Which category did you qualify?
I qualified in oration, which is persuasive speech, ironically enough.
No coincidence, you're the one they sent to ask for money.
Hello, everybody. Uh, I'm Caden Harmon. I am a junior, going to be a senior next year here on the forensics team. Uh, I have been doing forensics since my freshman year of high school. I was approached by Mr. Bauer, and he told me that, uh, he thinks I would've been a good person for the event I do, in which I really can't say that he's wrong. But the event that I do here is called United States Exemplary Speaking, or USX for short. And essentially what that is, is it's speaking over public events. So, I go and I draw a topic, I have thirty minutes to come up with an argument defending or saying yes, why something should happen, or no, why something should happen, just things revolving around that. So, just general current events things. Uh, I really like forensics, I really, I like it a lot, and it's been a great opportunity for me in high school, because especially in middle school, I was, I was fairly nervous when it came to something like public speaking, but going into something like extent, knowing that I'm go, able to go up in front of somebody that I do not know and give a full, what, give a fully thought-out, rounded-out speech has been very helpful, and being able to go to nationals seems like a great opportunity for the both of us here to gain that, to gain some different kind of experience, going to the big stage, competing with some of the best competitors from across the country. Um, we've had overall pretty good team, and like Mr. Bauer says, we've, we've had pretty good individual as well as team successes going into this, but overall, I just think that it would be a very great opportunity for the both of us to go, simply just because we'd be going up against some of the best competitors in the, in the entire nation when it comes to the events that we do.
Yeah, there's definitely one thing to be said when you go to all these regional meets around Kansas and you know who you're competing with, versus you get on that national stage with other people that have earned the right to be there and you don't know who they are. That would be a little nerve-wracking.
It is a little nerve-wracking. One kind of interesting thing that happens, though, at nationals is, uh, all of a sudden, you know, for most of the season, you know, Caden and Mateo can probably attest to this, we see some of those same competitors, and you just sort of build it up in your head, because, you know, we have really good speakers in, in Kansas. We're very, very good in debate as well as forensics, um, just in our area. And you wind up, like, just getting it in your head, oh, I mean, I just wanna beat that one guy from Nickerson or Silver Lake or whoever it happens to be.
Or collegiate.
Or collegiate, you know? And, but when you go to nationals, what's kinda interesting is all of the Kansas, uh, students, you almost, it's, it's like an us-versus-the-world sort of thing. And so, when someone qualifies or is able to advance from Kansas, it's, it's a real cool thing. All of a sudden, everyone just goes together so that they can watch the other person compete and it, and, uh, because you're not necessarily competing against each other in those preliminary events or preliminary rounds. You're competing against the kids from California or from Texas, and so, um, it, there's a bit of a bonding element that, that happens there. I do wanna point out just one other thing. There are other ways to also, uh, support the team. Um, on the, I believe it's the backside of the brochure, I can't remember exactly where. Um, it does detail, um, how to be able to follow us on, on social media. Would you mind handing that one to us? And, no, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that, that you got one. Uh, we, there are other ways to support the team, there's social media, and then also we do have, uh, a couple of forensics and debate meets that happen over the course of the season, and we're always looking for judges. Judges are paid in, sadly, nothing but gratitude, but also some fantastic food in our fax lounge that we have at the high school. And so, um, if, if you ever have time to be able to, um, volunteer, we usually put a call out on Facebook a month or two in advance of some of those meets. And so, um, uh, that's another way to be able to, uh, to support the activity. And so, um, with that-
Do you, do you have a guess, a guesstimate of how many people go to nationals this year?
Over six thousand.
Okay.
Um, yes, it's the largest academic, six, six thousand, sixty thousand, six thousand, over six thousand, yes. And so, it's billed as the largest academic competition that happens in the, in the United States. It's the largest speech competition that happens anywhere in the world as well. Um, there are a couple of events, like World Schools Debate, where people from other countries actually come in and, and compete at this event as well. Um, and I mentioned earlier, a reason it's happening in Des Moines, that's where the National Speech and Debate Association was founded, it's their centennial, and so they're looking to bring it home, um, for, for this particular year. All right, um, any questions?
Oh, why don't you guys make a motion?
Go for it, Jim. Make a motion to, uh, would we give a fifteen, fifteen? Sound good? Well, I'll make it. Yeah, I'll, I'll do it. Make a motion to fifteen hundred dollars to the NSDA for their national conference.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, donate, uh, fifteen hundred dollars to the Halsted Forensic Club. All in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign. All right.
Congratulations.
All right. Well, hey-
Thank you all so much. Yes, we appreciate it.
Again, I, I do see your posts on your social media.
Do.
And, uh, I always puff up with a little bit of pride whenever you guys win something, so keep bringing the hardware home.
I'll tell you what, people of our age, I appreciate young people with confidence.
Love that stuff.
I appreciate it.
I'll point out just a couple more ways to, uh, to be able to brag on, on some of these, these students. Um, Jaden also qualif, or, uh, finished, uh, first place in Program of Oral Interpretation at State, um, just a little while ago. Mateo's a three-year state, a three-time state finalist as well, and also, has also qualified for other national tournaments, but they're held on the same day as, uh, as graduation, which sadly, we can't make-
My biggest concern with her is I hope her grades are good, because she's missing a lot of school.
I believe they're pretty good.
I make sure of it, don't worry.
I had one daughter that was valedictorian of her class, and the other one, not so much.
It's okay, sometimes talent flies other places.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Always good to hear what our students are up to.
Yeah.
Well, that takes us on down. We, did we cover the report from the digital media production class? That's you guys.
I will just share real quick. We did not dress up. We wore our convention swag from the, um, convention that you so kindly donated to us for.
Got my work swag on.
Um, I'm Kelly Zier. Uh, I was here the last time with a different group of kids that presented to you guys. And, um, Aurora Farmer is the other digital media teacher. Um, she could not be here tonight, so I am actually gonna let Malia take the lead, and she is going to share everything with you, and I'm just gonna give you a, um, few flyers on the success that we've had. Um, I also brought a convention magazine that I was gonna leave with you, that you are welcome to look through, so you can kind of see the things that these kids did and experienced and all of those kinds of things in Kansas City. Um, our hope for next year around this time is Seattle, Washington, so, um, we, we'll see how that goes, but I will let her take it from here.
How far will one of them new electric buses go before it needs charged?
On behalf of the whole digital media program, I'd like to give a heartfelt thank you to the city council for your monetary donation to our JAA and NSPA convention trip. We ended up taking a total of nine students and two teachers for three days and two nights. We stayed at the Weston Hotel, which also was where the convention was. There was over twenty-five hundred students who were at this convention, and we went to over one hundred and thirty professional learning sessions-
Thank you.
-that ranged in topics from writing, design, law and ethics, and so much more. All the students had a chance to compete in a contest at the, um, at the convention, where we brought home three awards. Max Linton got an honorable mention in feature photography, I got an honorable mention in logo design, and Reggie McLeod got an honorable mention in editorial cartoon. The convention helped us learn, uh, new things, helped us create our state contest that we just competed in two weeks ago, where we took second place overall in three A. We also had one student earn the three A, four A Writer of the Year, and another student earned the three A, four A Video Journalist of the Year. Again, we wanna thank you for your support of our journalism program, as we would not have been able to go to the convention without your donation, and we are open to take any questions you may have.
I will say the two papers that I handed out, the second one that says second place, that was our, um, state, uh, content, competition that we just had last weekend, and, uh, over half of our kids that qualified at regionals, um, they took those contests to state, and that's how we were able to do so well there, but it wouldn't have been without going to the convention and seeing some of the professional journalists and the designers- professional journalists and the designers and the things that they were able to meet with and talk to and all of the things um, that allowed us to do one place better than last year and hopefully one more place better next year and, and a first place trophy. That's our, that's our goal. We have high standards. Um, the second paper that I gave you, the one that says at the heart of the story, that was the theme of the national convention, um, being based in Kansas. And, um, the three award winners at the national level are there on the side. And it kind of shares a little bit about them. And then the other pictures are obviously the group that went and then different things that they did. Our state, um, KSPA celebrated fifty years this year. And so they were able to do a party, uh, to open up the convention for all of the kids in Kansas that came to the convention. And so they did a big get together and celebrating the fifty years of journalism for the state of Kansas, along with hundred, a hundred years of journalism for, um, the JEA organization. So.
Is this usually in Kansas City?
No. Um, there are two a year and they go throughout the nation. Mrs. Farmer and myself went as professional development in October, September, October, um, to Boston. And then with this one being local, we were hoping to be able to get the kids involved and kind of see how it worked with bringing kids along and doing all of the things and competing and, um, attending the sessions and then those things like that. So the fall one is a little bit harder, um, with kids, just because there's so many other sports and events and things that are going on. I mean, there's just as much in the spring, but the majority of our kids were involved kind of more in the fall than the spring. And so it helped us take more kids in the spring.
Did, did you print these up?
We did.
Okay.
We designed them and printed them.
What other medias do you work in besides print? I mean, is banners, mm?
Um, yeah, our advanced photo class, um, helped design our senior banners this year. And we also took the photos and edited them.
And business cards.
And we, yeah, we also do business cards. Our print shop class does that.
And then there's a video production class and they do a lot of, um, like some of the hype videos and things like you see for sports and things like that. They get to create and be a part of and do.
Okay.
So. But yeah, we do do a print shop, um, class that does different things that people would like, um, throughout the community and things like that as well. So.
So I should come be coming to see you then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate you guys coming in, giving us a follow-up.
It was a great time and we appreciate the support because like I said, we wouldn't have been able to do it without you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Well, what do you think, counsel? It sounds like we're raising a bunch of winners here in town, right?
That's what it's all about.
Well, let's move on to the last item under, well, I guess we got two items left under new business. This one is, uh, the wayfinding signage proposal.
I think our council included in your packet was, um, a proposal for miracle signs. Um, I'll note this was for a total of six wayfinding signs. Um, again, it's option number two is kind of what you all had, um, done. I can tell you, staff have preliminary laid out. We think we probably actually are going to go down to five, um, just as we logistically looked around the city where we can put these. How to direct, you know, to the various waypoints we'd want, um, visitors to the town, uh, to be able to find. But then also make sure that all the signs, you know, either point to another sign or get someone to their destination. Presumably, uh, did come, uh, slightly, uh, over our original estimate when we applied for the grant. We thought the total project cost would be twenty-five, um, thousand, and that was just kind of roughly going off. We are doing, um, a bit, um, better sign design than we originally anticipated. I'd say, you know, we were thinking more just post one. These are multi-directional, so they'll be able to be read, you know, both sides, um, going to the single pedestal. Uh, one thing I'd note, um, we did, uh, speak, uh, obviously, um, the proposal there is for the six. But if we approve that amount and we go down to five, they would re-propose, um, at a lower amount. So we'd actually spend less on the project. Just to remind the council, we received just shy of twelve thousand dollars in grant funding towards it. Um, so anything above that eleven thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, uh, comes out of our, um, capital improvement funds and our quality of life.
So this was a fifty-fifty cost share grant? That's how it was awarded or?
We, we basically proposed a fifty-fifty. Um, I think for the actual, um, seed grant, you only had to have like a fifteen percent match, but, um, like most grants, if you proposed more, uh, it, it did it. And so our proposal too, um, where this was a grant we didn't joint application with, uh, the cities of Sedgwick and North Newton. It was twenty-five thousand dollars total that was awarded. And so, um, you know, eleven-six of that's coming our direction. And then the remaining is split between those other two cities. So. But, uh, I guess to keep the project moving, unless there's, um, that, we had the total price in there. Um, you can see the, um, we do have the option two. Uh, we felt uncomfortable until we have further conversations on whether or not, you know, Public Works could handle installation of the signs or not. Um, but if we do in fact know that Public Works could install the signs, then we would be able to deduct another eight thousand off the cost. We just didn't want to commit to that till we actually talked to them, find out, you know, what kind of footing would be needed for the sign, um, things of that nature. But that was.
I saw that. That was thirteen hundred and thirty-three dollars per sign to put it in the ground. That's a lot of money for a sign.
I'll go dig the holes and pour the concrete myself for that.
I say ours is just, we want to make sure we get the exact, you know, make sure we have.
Is this the only proposal we have is from Miracle?
Yeah, once we got Miracle, pretty much, you know. As we discussed, the project and council kind of wanted to tie it into the marquee design, you know? We.
I just wonder if we shouldn't, uh, seek some other proposals.
Guess I will tell you, my big problem is you're fishing out someone else's design then at that point.
That's true.
That's true, yeah. But, um, is, I saw that about the eight thousand dollars, if we were, is this something that you think your staff can install these?
Like I said, that was, that was my biggest concern was what kind of a foundation do these things need?
Yeah.
And as long as we have that, I think, I don't see a big problem with it, but.
They're going to spec the size of a hole, maybe a little bit of a rebar in it.
Right.
Uh, a cage of some sort, rebar cage in there. And then they'll probably have the base that will actually embed into the concrete to then bolt this post to it, I would imagine. So they're probably going to give you everything.
Yeah, that's, I don't, I don't know. So.
So it'd be a pretty simple thing, I would imagine. Do you? Huh?
It's never simple.
Yeah, yeah. You're going to hit something in the ground you don't plan on.
But if there's some design work that says, you know, you need, this is what they need in the ground, then I'm pretty confident we can.
At this point, would we want to make a motion to accept this contingent on the fact that Pat gets the information he needs to install these himself? We could save eight thousand dollars.
I think accepting, you know, for the max and then the direction to staff to basically, you know, if installation is feasible for us to do to pursue that, because we'll just come under and report that back to you of.
Right, right.
You know, instead of thirty-six, it was only twenty-eight. And, and Miracle Signs has been great to work with as far as, you know, we still might say it's not necessarily feasible, but we might be able to work with them. Like if we do the prep work of actually digging the holes and stuff, will that save us cost?
Right.
Something to get us closer to that original.
Yeah.
Idea that we had.
And so we're looking at option two?
Um, option two is that the, the big, we did ask, just from a color standpoint, um, on that, you know, you guys had liked the white. We can do, you know, blue at the top and still have the light as, or the white as far as like dividing between the waypoints. Um, because I know there's kind of some concern on the blue coloring that you kind of lost the division line. Um, so that was brought up as an option. They said, you know, if you want to do white as far as the border and then the points in between, that they could do that and still do blue at the top if that was the city's preference because of, you know, Halsted and the school. And then we also asked as far as changing the top, um, we're trying to find out five different, um, monikers, if you will, so we actually can make each sign say something different. So they all don't say biggest little city or founded, but actually each sign will have its own, own unique saying that is referencing Halsted. But yeah, I mean, we're planning to go with the single, I guess, base pedestal.
This pedestal, I don't.
Well, I actually like, uh, option two and I, they, I think that's a good, because I actually like the blue on top. But then if we kept the white separation lines, that's, I like that. That looks, I think it looks sharp.
Okay, so blue on top and then?
So color, color of option one and pedestal of option two.
Right. So they're still going to have these white lines separating with the blue, just the blue stripe on top. Okay.
Yeah, I like that idea. Option four.
Yeah.
I said they've been great. They've answered questions because that was mine of when I just said, hey, I think, you know, as we've laid this out around the city, um, you know, we originally thought six, but now we're down to five. And it was like, is this roughly? It was like, oh, no, well. Yeah, you can basically.
Anybody else read that contract?
I did it earlier.
Very similar to our marquee contract.
Let's see, where was that amount at?
It would be, um.
I found it.
Thirty-six, nine ninety-six. Because you, if you all want the reflective white vinyl, that's five hundred dollars was the cost to switch to reflective white vinyl.
With the option of possibly deducting the eight thousand if we install.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would that if there's no more discussion or questions. Oh, sure.
It, it's not a, a big, just from my understanding, and I'll be real honest, it might have been enough fine print that I didn't do my best job reading. So I apologize about that. But say that they need to be updated at some point, is that an option?
Yeah.
There you go.
So sorry, I came from eighth grade promotion and I hadn't planned, I was like, oh, I think I can still make it all work. And that's just my life right now.
Yeah, no, the, um, basically, uh, because some of the signs we realized would also, um, have blank spaces. Like we didn't have as much since they're bidirectional, you know, one direction, you definitely can hit four points of interest. The other direction, you might only be able to hit three. Um, and, and their answer was basically new graphics can be applied to the blank spots, um, or they just basically remove all the, all the graphics from the sign. And that obviously is not nearly as a cost intensive process as, as this is. And one of the reasons, you know, very, like Miracle Signs is he just said, you know, depending on how many years have passed, when you guys get that fourth point, you might want to put on a sign. Like we would probably recommend you just replace all of it. Otherwise you're going to have like one thing that looks very bright and new and everything else is sun faded by that.
Yes.
So, yeah, these will have ongoing costs, uh, to Councilmember Will's point of, you know, it's something we're going to have to periodically update. No, no different than we do the wood signs. But the nice thing about these is hopefully they will stand the test of time longer than those wood signs are because those are all actually have been restored the last time that we can restore them. And after this, they'll be done. So.
I thought the price might be a little steep until I seen the actual design on George's iPad. Now I understand.
Okay.
They're, they're pretty nice.
But the, the life, like the longevity of these compared to the wood signs that we have, we're looking at, do we have an idea of?
Should be, I mean, the, with the wood signs, every time they repaint them, they have to re-sand them down. And that just, you know, makes it less difference, you know, less, less relief, less space, um, on the wood sign itself. These are aluminum, so in theory, we shouldn't see a lot of rust issue deterioration. So.
And they're doing an applied vinyl graphics. So whenever they're updated, they just put new vinyl graphics.
Lights or no lights?
No lights.
No lights, but that was where the best we could do was reflective.
Yeah.
The city eventually, I guess, could look at maybe solar lighting, but I think when we originally kind of discussed, you know, when applying for the grant, it was kind of like, there's probably not a lot of people at night that are trying to find the school or anything.
Yeah, I remember talking about that too, thinking who's coming in at ten o'clock at night needing to know where the swimming pool is or something.
Reflective, really. When you go through like Mount Ridge, you can really see it in the evening.
Right.
Go through there all the time.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, uh, to accept a proposal for miracle sign for an amount of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars. With the exception that after consulting with staff, a miracle sign, we may possibly install them ourselves for eight thousand dollars less. How's that for a motion?
That's a motion. I just need a second.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to accept a proposal from Miracle Sign for thirty-six, nine ninety-six. With the exceptions George noted, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. All right, counsel. Jim, are you ready for this? Because you're in the chair.
We got one more.
Oh, yeah, we do have one more.
We got one more.
We got a, you, it'll give you time to warm up.
All right, I'm warming.
We added this one on the agenda, item number seven, the K dot cost share.
Uh, so that was a handout, um, just sent this. Uh, it's a pretty boilerplate agreement, uh, as far as just the city accepting that cost share grant for the North Street sidewalk and street improvements. So, um, not a lot of things, you know, we're going to be able to, to push back or, or, or change. This is pretty standard of what we saw like with the state office of school. Um, I don't think Brad had any glaring issues. Um, so we would just ask that you all approve the mayor to sign this so we can get it back to K dot and continue that process.
Well, we did get this at the beginning, before we started. Any of you others have a chance to go through it? I, I did and, and.
I looked at it a little bit.
Yeah. Right. And as you mentioned, it's pretty much boilerplate. Um, it's not like we have a lot of, um, latitude to say we're going to accept this or not. We, we do. So with that, we make a motion, uh, for Mayor to sign, uh, this document and for staff to proceed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept this K dot cost share agreement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. All right. Now, that does conclude our new business portion of our agenda. We do have one executive session this evening. And I would entertain the motion for that, just as soon as Ethan hands it to Jim. Jim's got it already.
I'd like to make a motion for the council to recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation. Consult with the city attorney on the matters that would deem privileged, you know, attorney-client privilege. The exception of the KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B two. And I also ask that we add the city manager and city attorney to the executive session to last for thirty minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign and we'll move back to the back council. We're in the council. Make the, pooh, same sign, and we'll move back to the back council, we're in the council.
Get horse here.
Okay.
We are back from our executive sessions. There any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing from the council, we will continue on in the next section of our agenda is the report section. And governing body comments is first and Julie has four proclamations for me this evening. So I'll do my best to get through these. The first one is National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Have declared law enforcement officer safety and wellness a top priority and the IACP Center for Officer Safety and Wellness. Promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas the members of the Halsted Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Halsted. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. And that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property. By protecting them against violence or disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against suppression or intimidation. And whereas the Police Department of the City of Halsted has grown to be a modern, scientific law enforcement agency which. Unceasingly provides a vital public service. And now therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas. Call upon all citizens of Halsted and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations. To observe the week of May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as Police Week. In which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities. Have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in doing so have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Sign this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Next, we'll move on to Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day. Seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care including preventative medicine, follow-up care. And access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of. First responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers. Firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses. Emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams whether career or volunteer. Engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating. Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas, in recognition of this event. Do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. As Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme. Honoring our past, forgiving for forging our future. And I encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Sign this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Had a few spelling errors in the end of that one. Did you type all that out?
Copy to base it.
It was whoever wrote it made some spelling errors.
Honored, are we from Arkansas?
They said honor and I put the G on the N. This next one is National Public Works Week proclamation. This covers you, Pat. Advancing quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services. That are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health. High quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Halsted. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts. Of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Halsted to gain knowledge of. And to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works. And public programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now. Therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted. Do hereby designate the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association. And government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies. Designed to pay tribute to our public work, works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions. They make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Sign this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Now we'll move on to our Poppy Day proclamation. I see this one every year and it's one I kind of always look forward to. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower which pays tribute to the war dead and aids the living veterans and their families. And whereas the poppy as a memorial flower for the American war dead is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War. And whereas the contributions are used solely for children and youth and veterans affairs and rehabilitation in our local community. Now therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas, do proclaim. May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four as Poppy Day in our community. So everybody can run down the. The American Legion or go by the flower shop. See if you can find some poppies. I don't know if Derek carries them or not. That's going to finish my proclamations and now we'll move on to the rest of the governing body for comments tonight. I'm going to start with you, Shawna.
Okay. Well, I just want to congratulate all of the graduates that just finished up their schooling at Halsted High School. And wish them best of luck in their future endeavors and also those that just were promoted from eighth grade on into the high school and best of luck to them as they. Venture on to the next chapter of their schooling careers. So best of luck to them as well. And to all of our athletes who are still competing. We still have track runners and softball players and all, yeah, playing right now probably. I don't know. Yep, so best of luck to all of our athletes.
Okay, George.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Charlie.
Tomorrow there's a voting day. Take advantage of it. Also, reminder that we have council meeting moved over one day, May the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just going to make an inquiry now about. What can we do with e-waste? Televisions, you know, CTRs, cathode ray tubes and blah, blah, blah. Sound systems, you know. It's not, it's not enough to put, yeah, I mean, I could get the dumpster, one of the things. Those little green barrel boxes that has our name on it, City of Halsted. I really don't need that, just for old TVs.
I called our trash company and asked them that very question because I had to replace a camper and, or a TV in my camper. And they told me if the old one fits in my dumpster, put it in my dumpster.
I can tell you it won't. It's not going to fit in my trash cans anyway.
I don't know if they have a way if you set it by the curb, they can just pick it up or not. I would just call them and ask them.
Nicely.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to run around town and drop somebody else's that called to have Julie my case if I did that.
The last huge old TV I had to get rid of, I bought a new TV from Roger Crawford and made him haul the old one off.
Thanks for that, Roger, if you're watching. Anyway, okay, that, you know, just, just curious. I could always ask my neighbor, but I haven't yet, so.
All right. I'd like to congratulate the groups that were in here earlier. That's outstanding. That's what we want to see. From our, from our schools. You know about the athletics and it's always tops on my list also, but. This is the stuff that really carries through and tomorrow's. Mentioned the election on that means a lot.
Did you guys notice those students that were here how articulate their speech and everything? There's, there's hope for our future.
When I go by the school and when they had the, they had a forensic meet here and you see anywhere from Mays to Norton to Abilene. That's amazing. So keep that in mind.
All right, Ethan, you're up.
Get hoarse here. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing from the council, we will continue on in the next section of our agenda is the report section and governing body comments is first and Julie has four proclamations for me this evening. So I'll do my best to get through these. The first one is National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas International Association of Chiefs of Police have declared law enforcement officer safety and wellness a top priority and the IACP Center for Officer Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas the members of the Halsted Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Halsted. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Police Department of the City of Halsted has grown to be a modern, scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. And now therefore I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas, call upon all citizens of Halsted and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12 through the 18th, 2024 as Police Week, in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in doing so have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Sign this 13th day of May 2024. Next, we'll move on to Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out of hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme honoring our past forgiving for forging our future. And I encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Sign this 13th day of May 2024. A few spelling errors in the end of that one. Did you type all that out? It was whoever wrote it made some spelling errors.
Hon, are we from Arkansas?
It said honor and I put the G on the N. This next one is National Public Works Week proclamation. This covers you, Pat. Advancing quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well being of the people of the city of Halsted. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Halsted to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, therefore I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, do hereby designate the week of May 19th through the 24th, 2024 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work, works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Sign this 13th day of May 2024. Now we'll move on to our Poppy Day proclamation. I see this one every year and it's one I kind of always look forward to. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower which pays tribute to the war dead and aids the living veterans and their families. And whereas the poppy as a memorial flower for the American war dead is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War. And whereas the contributions are used solely for children and youth and veterans affairs and rehabilitation in our local community. Now therefore I Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, Kansas, do proclaim May 24th, 2024 as Poppy Day in our community. So everybody can run down to the the American Legion or go by the flower shop, see if you can find some poppies. I don't know if Derek carries them or not. That's going to finish my proclamations and now we'll move on to the rest of the governing body for comments tonight. I'm going to start with you, Shawna.
Well, I just want to congratulate all of the graduates that just finished up their schooling at Halsted High School and wish them best of luck in their future endeavors. And also those that just were promoted from eighth grade on into the high school and best of luck to them as they venture on to the next chapter of their schooling careers. So best of luck to them as well. And to all of our athletes who are still competing. We still have track runners and softball players and all, yeah, playing right now probably. I don't know. Yep. So best of luck to all of our athletes.
Okay, George.
Charlie. Tomorrow, there's a voting day. Take advantage of it. Also, reminder that we have council meeting moved over one day, May the 27th to 28th. Yeah. And I'm just, I'm just going to make an inquiry now about what can we do with e-waste? Televisions, C, you know, CTRs, cathode tubes and blah, blah, blah. Sound systems, you know, it's not, it's not enough to put, yeah, I mean, I could get the dumpster, one of the things. Those little green barrel boxes that has our name on it, City of Halsted. I really don't need that just for old TVs.
I called our trash company and asked them that very question because I had replaced a camper and, or a TV in my camper. And they told me if the old one fits in my dumpster, put it in my dumpster.
I can tell you it won't. It's not going to fit in my trash cans anyway.
I don't know if they have a way, if you set it by the curb, they can just pick it up or not. I would just call them and ask them.
Nicely.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to run around town and drop into somebody else's that called to have Julie my case if I did that.
The last huge old TV I had to get rid of, I bought a new TV from Roger Crawford and made him haul the old one off. Thanks for that, Roger, if you're watching.
Anyway, okay, that, you know, just, just curious. I could always ask my neighbor, but I haven't yet, so.
All right. I'd like to congratulate the groups that were in here earlier. That's outstanding. That's what we want to see from our, from our schools. You know about the athletics and it's always tops on my list also, but this is the stuff that really carries through. And tomorrow's, I mentioned the election on that means a lot.
Did you guys notice those students that were here, how articulate their speech and everything? There's, there's, there's hope for our future.
When I go by the school and when they had the, they had a forensic meet here and you see anywhere from Mays to Norton to Abilene. That's amazing. So keep that in mind.
All right, Ethan, you're up. It's time for the city manager report and you can move right into financial when you're done with that.
Okay. The formal reports will be emailed out to you all as far as departmental activities for the previous month, but just some highlights. I did attend the spring Kansas Municipal Gas Association Full Board of Directors meeting. The big thing there for the city is KMG is continuing their relationship with Wood River Energy, which helps manage supply. That was done at the behest of the membership, you know, to try and find ways to mitigate what happened during winter storm Yuri back in 2021. Wood River, just to put it in perspective, being under that purchase arrangement and how we purchased gas in conjunction with them and KMG during the last winter storm, which was January 12th through the 21st. It estimated benefit to Halsted, being under that kind of purchase agreement, we saved $81,000 over the course of that week and those volatility of gas prices where gas prices jumped as high as $21 a unit. But we were able to avoid that because of that Wood River agreement. So very, very excited that KMG is continuing that relationship and I believe that will benefit our, both our system and our customers as we go into the next year. Staff have met with Department of Commerce staff on the Base 2.0 grant and the HEAL grant. Hopefully we are just about ready to get all the required paperwork and things done on that Base 2.0 grant where we'll get our first dis- dispersment, which is good because I'm sure we'll start seeing some requests for payment on that spec building. Foundation has been laid and we're also in talks with EDC on support of that project. Staff continue working with Lochner and KDOT on the Safe Route Schools Grant and the Cost Share Grant. One of the required paperwork we just had you approve this evening. The levy inspection by the United States Army Corps of Engineers was today. Pat didn't come running into my office immediately afterwards, so I assume it went pretty well, but we'll get that completed report from them here in a few weeks. As you all know, via email updates, we have been dealing with BNSF and Mill Creek on needed repairs to the industrial park rail spur that were identified. We continue working with departments on building out and putting in requests for our 2025 budget. The request for proposal or ideas for moving the city house has been posted, so that will end and hopefully if we have any responses, you all will be reviewing those next council meeting. Just a reminder, I guess to all, all residents that the city is not doing a citywide cleanup this year, the week after citywide garage sales. I am happy to report the reserve of dumpster program has been going gangbusters. We've actually had so many requests and how far out dumpsters were being requested. We did contact Nicely and actually have put two more into rotation to try and keep up with demand, but not, you know, have a dumpster on every street per se. We, we think this is probably as most people are realizing that we're not having citywide cleanup day. So if demand falls, then we'll just return those back to Nicely. But so far it's been very successful. Big kudos to Julie and her team. They've made that a pretty seamless and easy process, I think, for residents to engage with, so. And going into financials, since you all had a formal first quarter update, last time, not a lot as you look at that, that's going to be shockingly different from what you saw for the end of the first quarter in March's numbers. I will note, while the general fund is up, we still are seeing delay in dispersments from, for sales tax. So we're, in comparison to last year, we were generally banking those revenues in the same month and now they're coming in the next month. So a bit of delay there. Gas fund continues to show a significant negative cash balance, but again, that's planned spin down, so please don't be alarmed by that. And that's just as those payment plans have come in, we've continued those accelerated payments, which again is saving our gas customers money on the interest on that loan. So we're in good shape. The capital fund balances there in the back. I will note, the police department sold the 2020 Dodge Durango for $40,000 to a county in California. So that was actually a little bit better than we anticipated getting on that vehicle. That was negotiated sale. We still currently have it. We're waiting to ship that out. The new unit has been received and paid for and is in service. And the other thing I'll point out related fiscally is in your Kansas Government Journal, this is the issue where they have that separate tax financial booklet that they include. It's very interesting. They actually break it down, you know, by city class size, first, second, and third. So you can kind of look comparatively, you know, where Halsted ranks in terms of active mill levy, what our debt ratio is compared to other cities in the state. The big thing always caveat, you know, is don't get too held up on a mill number because mills are a mathematical formula and different for all of us. So, you know, there's reasons why cities smaller than us might have lower mills and reasons why cities bigger than us might have higher mills because that's all based off of your valuation. But it is interesting, I guess, and things to have in mind as we go into budget to kind of see comparatively, you know, I know we always hear opinions about what our tax rates are, but comparatively to other cities, you might see that we're not that far off from what is around Kansas. So that is all I have this evening.
Yeah, we're not Overland Park.
Well, I'd just like to say one thing that our citizens, we are fortunate being in a community the size that we are to be able to do an accelerated pay on that gas bill that we have. A lot of communities our size wouldn't be able to do that.
That was a full unnerving when I had to sign at the bottom of that note to borrow that money, by the way.
One last thing, Ethan, can you send me that structural engineering report on essentially what before, but I just looked and I can't find it. If you would resend that to me.
Personal?
Yes, to my personal.
Counsel, any other questions? Well, that concludes our agenda, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.